This committee hearing shall come to order. And the next item on the agenda is Bill 359-33. And I'd like to recognize the sponsor, Senator Stiklis, to give an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill 359-33 has been introduced with the intention of trying to craft a solution for our healthcare circumstances that are currently at risk of affecting every single one of our taxpayers, including those who haven't been born yet. Prior to Bill 359-33 being introduced, my committee has received and has currently been holding on to Bill 338. And Bill 338 is an act that seeks to increase the gross receipts taxes, the hotel occupancy taxes, borrow an additional $120 million, and even raise our trash fees, all in an attempt to address the financial challenges that are being faced by our healthcare system, particularly on the public side. Now, with that on the table, we really have to begin asking if we want to increase taxes across the board, as is being proposed, as well as the debt levels of our community, extending onto our children or grandchildren, or do we want to begin exploring other policy options? One policy option that came and went for the people of Guam, Mr. Chairman, was to be included in Obamacare. And years ago, when I first came into the legislature, we had $1 million from the federal government, an option to participate in Obamacare, and it was advised at the time that doing so would not be in the interests of the island and the people of Guam. Fast forward to today, and we have a healthcare circumstance that is pretty much putting us at risk of having to implement almost a form of Obamacare on our own locally by raising taxes and borrowing that's going to affect our entire community to try and create a unique government program intending to provide insurance coverage to those who don't have any. So what I've done is I've tried to go back and, in a very precise way, find out how we can address these healthcare shortcomings in our community without raising taxes on everybody, without borrowing on the backs of our children, and by making sure as well that we're tackling two birds of one stone by not only coming up with a way to ensure that funding is there for these healthcare expenses that are just enormous now and impossible for us to ignore, but also for us to do so in a way that's going to actually strengthen one of our powerhouse industries that we have here in our community. Right now, the hospitality industry, particularly the hotel industry, is enjoying a stellar six years at least. Back in 2010, our hotel industry had an average room rate of $111. In 2015, five years later, that room rate has increased by 43.2% to $159 as an average weighted room rate. The hotel occupancy tax in 2010 was $21 million, and it has increased to $27 million in 2015. It's actually larger going into 2016. Deconstructing the hotel occupancy tax by dividing it by 11%, which is the rate at which it's assessed, gives us an occupancy room revenue of $198 million in 2010 that has increased to $249 million in 2015. So we've seen dramatic growth of 25% in occupancy revenue alone. In the meantime, we've also evaluated the number of employees in the hotel industry. And in 2010, the number of employees of record was 5,290, and that has very nicely increased to 6,270 in 2015. The average non-supervisory hourly wage in 2010 was $8.44, and with the increase in the minimum wage, it has now increased from $8.44 in 2010 to $9.35 in 2015. The average non-supervisory hours worked per week was 37.9 hours in 2010, and it's 36.1 hours in 2015. Now, of these data sets, we were able to call out what the occupancy revenue was, and we were also able to figure out what the non-supervisory operational expenses were. And in a nutshell, the net operational revenue, when you less out the cost of the non-supervisory employees, net operational revenue was $110 million in 2010, and that has increased to $139 million in 2015. Now, that net operational revenue is before things like utilities and taxes and everything else. But just to put things into perspective, the price per barrel of oil in 2010 was $71, and in 2015 it has declined down to $52 per barrel. So a 26% decline in the cost of oil, which has also translated into a reduction in the cost of utilities. So operational costs have declined, ex-employee costs, room revenue has increased dramatically, occupancy has increased dramatically. The industry is thriving. And so there was a period in time, Mr. Chairman, where I was in the middle of the analysis of the GMH and the healthcare financial issues, and I opened up the KUAM app on my phone, and I saw two stories on the same day. One was about the record tourism arrivals that we've had in June, which we've also had in July. And on the same storyline was the story of how we're having to go out and borrow $45 million to meet the operational shortfalls of the Guam Memorial Hospital. And I said to myself, there needs to be a rebalancing here. When the hospitality industry was suffering greatly as a result of the downturn, the people of Guam have been the ones subsidizing the cost of hotel employee health expenses. We've been covering them on Medicaid if they qualified, if they did not qualify, our mandate to provide care at GMH, the doors are always open there. But we've come to a point now where our community now is the one that's suffering and struggling, and our largest employer, the hotel industry, is doing very, very well. And so what I wanted to do is, with the options before our people of, do we increase your taxes and increase your cost of living, or do we put forward before the people a referendum for them to determine if now is the time for the hotel industry to begin being the ones to absorb the healthcare costs of their workforce 100% across the board? Bill 359-33 will put forward to the people of Guam a referendum for them to vote on whether or not hotels should be required to provide health insurance for all of their employees. And we specify what the terms are of that health insurance. And that is that... The most important point is that the hotels may offer whatever kind of health insurance plans they want to offer, but at the very least, they must offer one plan that does not have any employee premium, but it may have a higher employee deductible. So it's almost similar to the government of Guam, high deductible health insurance plans. And so what that would provide is a basic level of preventive care, catastrophic insurance coverage, at no additional cost to the employee out of pocket, but it would also be required for every single employee within the hotel industry. And ideally, what we're hoping that would do, and what we're hoping the industry will be able to organize, because they are very organized, is creating a pool within themselves to be able to provide that basic level of coverage, and then as individual entities providing any kind of additional coverage that they see more fit for their enterprise. But, Mr. Chairman, we've come to a point where we don't have a lot of options with respect to being able to meet the healthcare costs of our community. We are either going to increase taxes and borrow to include hotel occupancy taxes, or we're going to have to figure out whether or not now is the time for our largest industry that's thriving and doing very well to begin absorbing the costs that have, for many years, been absorbed by the people of Guam. And so it's with great difficulty. I'm a very pro-private sector senator, but when we come up face to face with these kind of challenges, we need to figure out how we're going to address them heads-on. And I'm not in favor of increasing taxes. I'm not in favor of creating a new government program. I do believe that the solutions reside within the private sector, and I believe that requiring this new level of private sector coverage that the hotels will still have very much control over would provide the win-win necessary for us to address those healthcare concerns and do so in a way that's not going to be raising the cost of living for our people. I do want to add one further caveat, because the question becomes, why this specific industry? Is there a rational basis for this specific industry? And there actually is. This specific industry comes in contact with our largest revenue base, which is our tourists. And they come in contact with them in a very unique way. Our visitors come and they stay in our hotels for an average of three days. They're within a contained environment, and our people are exposed, these visitors, for an average of three days in a way that's unique to that particular industry in that we have a lot of different health issues that may present themselves in the form of bodily fluids exposures, close contact exposures, repetitive exposures in the form of the same individuals coming in contact with the same particular health risks. And so because we want to make sure that we don't have any kind of health issues negatively impacting our tourism industry, and because of the unique exposures and the contained environment and the high volume of individuals who are within those contained environments, it does present a very unique case for us to say, you know what, there is a particular health risk here that we might want to address. We should get in front of it. We don't want there to be some kind of a health crisis later that we say we should have been dealing with. And so having all of our people who are in this industry covered with health insurance would go a long way to ensuring that the preventive care is there. Because as I stated publicly as an example, the last thing we need is for our workers to be going to work ill without getting any kind of treatment because they don't have the coverage to go out and get it, and then they end up making our visitors sick, and they bring that bad news home, affecting our tourism industry. So we can either be behind the curve or we can be ahead of it. I prefer that we be ahead of it, and I prefer that we target this specifically in a way that's going to address a very large base, a very large employee base, in a way that's also coming at a time when that industry is doing very, very well, and I think that we can work out a way for everybody to be able to come out on top of this. So I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for hearing the bill, and I look forward to the testimony that we receive this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay. I want to welcome, in the order that they signed up to testify, Mr. Joe Blas, Ms. Catherine Castro, and Ms. Mary Rose. Is there anyone else in the audience that is here to testify? Okay, this is all I have so far for this evening. Okay, I'll let you decide who goes first.
Buenos dias, Mr. Chairman, Senator Respejo, Senator Vice Speaker, Senators Morrison, Torres, Soto, and Senator Stiklis. This is Massey. And I'm here, my name is Joe Blas, I'm from Jonya, Jonya, Ruus, of course. But also, I'm here as a chairman of the board for the Guam Hotel Restaurant Association. I'd like to comment on Honorable Senator Stiklis for saying that, yeah, we do pump a lot of money into the industry, do pump a lot of money into the economy. And this room is supposed to be filled today, however, as we speak, we're feeding thousands of local peoples out there in our restaurants, and thousands and thousands of tourists that are visiting our hotels today. So we're working. So today, this evening, I just want to say, my opinion on issues, I'm here to oppose the bill based on the face value of what I see on 359. And basically, as a background, I spent 20 years in the United States military, serving a country, and coming home to serve our people of Guam. And I've been in the industry now, in the hotels, for 27 years. And one of the issues that brought me to the industry is, first, to give back what I've learned in the military, and also my commitment to the people of Guam. We have over, almost 4,000 relatives here, they need jobs, the people of Guam. But coming in here, one of the issues that really ails me is the benefit issues that we have today in our island. Joining the military was one of the issues of going in there because of the benefit package. And still today, you probably see that, that this is why over men and women are joining the military today, or even the Guards and Reserve, is for the benefit package they receive. So that's why I'm in the industry. The first issue that, when I looked at the issue of the industry here, was the benefit package, and one of them was the health insurance. It's almost mirrors the military in one of the hotels that I work with, and I said, wow, this isn't it for me. So that's why I'm still here today. After almost 30 years in the industry, and I was one of the forefront in the local management, working in the industry where I say, hold on a minute, it's my turf. I want to help my people of Guam get in the industry and see what they can get, and reap the benefits of the health insurance that we have in the industry at that time. And that was 27 years ago. I had the opportunity to hire 700 people in one hotel, did that in about three months. What do they want? Health insurance. Today, after 27 years in one hotel, 43 of those employees are still there today because of the benefit package that we offer. Not only that they work hard as we speak, but they're still there today, serving men and women, ladies and gentlemen, from our island and the visitors. So I'm here to say that. In my capacity as the GHRAs, my colleagues here will also give some static issues in what we do today. We found out that over 90% of our hotels has offered insurance for their services. Yes, some of our employees work two jobs, so they have maybe double insurance, or they choose one insurance to go to. But it's my belief that working in the industry is hard work, and you deserve good benefits, including health insurance. And you probably would hear some testimony today that mirrors that issue in what I'm saying, that we do give health insurance, offer health insurance. And that's my opinion also, that targeting one industry is probably not so good in my terms, because there's a lot of us out there that probably needs to help those uninsured or underinsured, and I see that. But I'm just here to say that I believe it should be shared with any other industry, and not just targeting one industry as a hotel. Because we work hard for our money, we work hard to make this committee work for all of us, and we welcome people from our areas to come in the industry and see how... And I used to say this, because I do do career days in high schools and even do data skills, but one of the issues is the hotel industry is a very, very clean industry. We recycle most of the stuff, but also, if you notice today, the turnover rate in the industry has gone down from what it was 20 years ago. And that's because of the health benefit package that we have. And not only that we have health insurance, and even dental insurance that we have from employees, and yes, I want them, because I've seen ranking foul that is going through the promotion system that are directors today. And when the hierarchy gets up there, of course, you get more benefits. But also, as in management, I still have to protect that we have investors coming in here and saying, wow, this is a good place to build a hotel, this is a good place to bring in another franchise from off-island, because our economy is growing. And basically, that's what we need to do, all of us in this room needs to do. And again, I'm asking the good senators to look at this bill very carefully, and not just target one industry. This is Massey. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Castro?
Hafada, everyone. My name is Catherine Castro, and I'm representing the Guam Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for the opportunity to present our comments and position on Bill Number 359, also known as the Hotel Worker Health Insurance Act. The Guam Chamber of Commerce represents over 400 businesses on Guam who employ over 40,000 individuals on island. Just as it is a responsibility to our membership to support business-friendly legislation, which helps spur economic activity, it is also our responsibility to raise concerns when legislation supports the likelihood of increasing costs of operating a business on Guam. While we support the concept of enhancing employee benefits, which is associated with this particular act, we oppose the bill as it would create a government mandate with the potential of raising the cost of doing business on Guam. We further believe that offering employee benefits should be based on the business entity's ability to fund the benefit, and should not be publicly mandated. We are particularly concerned that this proposed referendum targets a specific business type. While we are not in favor of across-the-board tax increases or mandates, we are concerned that hotels and lodging places are the entities singled out in this legislation, when in fact, this industry does offer qualified health benefit plans for their employees. To our knowledge, there is no unique correlation between medical costs and hotel workers that would result in higher hospital utilization rates. We are additionally perplexed as to why this act has been introduced in the form of a voter referendum. Business entities take risks in doing business every day. The types of benefits individual companies offer, employees should rest with the company and not the voting public. Referendums are meant for issues that affect the island as a whole. In recent months, there has been legislation to raise the minimum wage, the creation of a Guam FMLA, requests to enhance fees and licenses, and a proposal to raise a number of taxes, among other items. And the Guam Chamber of Commerce has remained consistent in its position that we would not support legislation that has the potential to hinder a business's ability to control its operating costs. While we recognize the current crisis at the Guam Memorial Hospital, we believe that the hospital should be more deliberate in seeking greater reimbursement from Medicare, Medicaid, and MIP. Additionally, the hospital should examine internal measures to address its financial crisis, such as reviewing its staffing pattern to be leaner and more efficient. Greater dialogue between legislative and executive branches should be pursued, along with public and private sector collaboration. The Guam Chamber of Commerce supports the enhancement of employee benefits, specifically with medical insurance programs. As a matter of fact, a few years ago, the Board of Directors decided to pursue a health insurance initiative where members, specifically our small business members, would be able to pull together to create one large group, which ultimately provided them with the opportunity to negotiate for better premiums and benefits. The program continues to exist today, and we feel it should be a model for other organizations and entities to consider. So in closing, we support the author's intent in finding solutions to help the financial crisis at GMH. However, we believe that the bill is not the solution. Government mandates that impact operational costs have the dangerous potential of hurting jobs and salaries. The government should continue the discussions in aiding GMH while seeking creative ideas toward this pursuit. We thank you for the opportunity to submit our position, and the chamber certainly stands committed to working with your office and members of the legislature in identifying workable solutions for our island's only public hospital. Thank you very much.
Okay, and Mary, Mary Roos.
Hafada, and good evening, everyone. You have to be patient with me. I speak on behalf of our 28-member hotels, so I will take two hours. I'm just joking. No, but I do have the mic copies.
Put the mic back a little bit, because it...
I know, I'm so loud already, too. That's okay.
Wait, before you leave, any questions for the chambers represented?
I'm so sorry.
Wait, before Mary continues, because I'm just hearing that you have to leave.
I have to leave, I'm so sorry.
Catherine, I mean. Any questions for Ms. Castro?
No.
Ms. Blas? Mr. Blas, do you have to leave, or you're okay? Okay, yeah, thank you, ma'am, for your participation. I'm sorry, Mary, please.
Okay. As our chairman, Mr. Joe Blas, has said, you know, although we would like to have all of the hotels, some of them are represented here today, but we will have additional written testimony submitted with our final draft of our testimony that will be submitted within the 10 days, and that's a reminder to everybody that we do have 10 days within this public hearing to submit the written testimony, and we encourage everybody to do so. So if you allow me, and thank you so much for this opportunity to meet with everyone, Chairman Rory Respejo and all of his distinguished colleagues, on behalf of GHRA's Board of Directors, as well as members who represent more than 300 businesses on Guam, including 28-member hotels, we strongly oppose Bill 359-33, which seeks to provide a binding referendum during a general election, sorry, during a general election, that's requiring the hotels to provide insurance to all of its employees and all of the dependents, which, anywhere in the world, you wouldn't find that. And I know we try to do things here on Guam, we want to, you know, consider things that are special, and we want to try to do things, but we have been deeply, actually, hurt over the years in trying to do some special things here on Guam, where it really costs businesses, and it really puts a damper on when businesses are wanting to do business on Guam, they find that it's very difficult and more expensive, and it's for things like this. I want to be clear, though, that this is not, you know, the hotels against the uninsured population, it's certainly not this. And I want to make sure, and that's why at the beginning of my letter, I do go to the intent and identify, together with Chamber of Commerce, as well as Guam Contractors Association, I know you have a copy of their letter as well. We just do not support any measure that creates a government mandate on the private sector that strictly targets one business, also, or industry, we also oppose any legislation that increases the cost of business, especially when it's not founded by data. And the data here, there is no data, it's actually trying to correlate some information that is available through media or through reports, and trying to connect the dots on areas that really aren't directly correlated. And so I'm here to further provide information and to address some of the things that were cited in this piece of legislation. Bill 359 cites that the Guam Community Health Assessment released in 2014 reports that approximately 23.4% of Guam's population was uninsured between 2000 and 2011. That's approximately 39,000 people. I have 12 years of health insurance experience, and I can tell you that that is a growing number. We've seen this issue for a very long time in Guam, so it's not a new issue. And as Senor has said, our chairman, that over the last 27 years or more, you know, the insurance, or the hotels have continued to provide health insurance to its employees over the years. This is an important issue, though. The problems at GMH are important issues, but the direct correlation is really the uninsured market, but also the insured population who doesn't pay their bills, right? So Bill 359 is trying to make this correlation with the industry, which really doesn't apply. We need to address the real issues, and we need to get the data to support these assumptions. I encourage Senator Stiklis, through his committee, as well as the members of the 33 Guam Legislature, to work together to better understand the uninsured population and the outstanding receivables at the Guam Memorial Hospital. This is the heart of the problem that Senator Stiklis is trying to address. GMH's financial problems are not the liability of the private sector. We already pay our fair share in taxes. That is what the government of Guam receives. They don't produce any products, they don't deliver any services, the government does not produce anything that they sell out to the community to create revenue. They rely solely on the revenues of the private sector companies. The private sector industry already paries its fair share in taxes, as well as government fees, and that, those are the monies that go into the general fund. And those programs pay into Medicare, Medicaid, I'm sorry, Medicaid and MIP and the uninsured. We need to... We need to look at managing those problems. Furthermore, we've seen these same problems on the collections with not just GMH, we've seen these problems continually at Department of Revenue and Taxation. So these issues are not solely a GMH issue, it is a government of Guam issue, and those things need to be addressed. However, GMH has a much larger, more long-term, and actually very complicated issue that deals with more related, directly related, and proven to be related to compact impact funding, local funding of Medicaid and MIP, outstanding receivables old to Gov Guam to their own agencies, general accounting problems with collections and billings and keeping up to date with the coding system at GMH, so that we can be able to bill against the federal programs like Medicare. The legislature has the authority to conduct an oversight hearing to inquire about the uninsured population, as well as the outstanding receivables at GMH. Why aren't we doing that instead? Let's look at where the problems are within GMH, rather than always just going through the board. You guys can certainly conduct that oversight hearing, not just for GMH, but also rev and tax. GHRA has worked side by side with Guam Chamber of Commerce, together with the government of Guam, both legislative and the executive branches, to address these issues over the years. Not in recent years, though, but we're willing to work with you on that. The issue is not about money, the issue is the management of the money and the operations of the services provided by the government of Guam, the hotels and every other employer in private sector, because this is not, today it's a hotel issue, tomorrow it's all of private sector probably. So we already create industries, recreate jobs and services, those all translate to generating money for the government of Guam through tax revenue and fees. Bill 359 mentions one of the main reasons why Gov Guam is unable to address the financial challenges of GMH, and that is because we missed the boat with the Affordable Care Act. That's true. There is no mention of how we address that issue. I know that that's a much bigger issue, where we have to go through Congress, and we also have to be part of a whole effort to get that funding. We have all the mandates of Obamacare through Affordable Care Act, but we don't have the subsidies. Though, that's where we could have addressed those issues with uninsured population and find opportunities to get that, those subsidies and programs to help offset our costs. But why aren't we having that conversation? Why aren't we moving towards that direction? I know there are talks of a universal healthcare plan. Although we don't necessarily agree with all of that, we should discuss all those issues, not target one business sector or one industry to offset the costs. We already do that by providing taxes and fees. Bill 359-33 gives the impression that insurance is not being offered to hotel employees. That is completely untrue and unfounded. Bill 359-33 and all other legislative bills need to start having supportive data. Where is the data to support that? We can't make assumptions and create legislation. We should have been doing this in a roundtable discussion. I always make myself available, I always tell each and every one of you, I'm always available for that. Our sister organizations and stakeholders are always willing to work on that, and I'm telling you that GHRA is working together with GCA and Chamber of Commerce and the Chinese Chamber of Commerce and all of our sister organizations like SHRM to address these issues, because we are constantly being attacked and barraged by really these arbitrary legislations. We need to be able to address the fact that we have been pulled into this. It has nothing to do with us. This is a GMH issue, it's a Gov Guam issue on how to address the financial problems with GMH. According to GHRA survey, based on the data from its 28-member hotels, yes, Senor was right, 97.3% of all GHRA members have insurance, but 100% of all the hotels provide insurance. They always have. They may not provide, every one of them, like a 401K plan, but they all have health insurance. Out of, and I know the concern is, not everybody can afford it, or maybe not everybody opts in for the insurance. Out of the 100% of the hotel employees, 80%, 81% are full-time. They are all eligible for insurance, 81%. That is way more than any other market you'll find in a tourism industry. Most tourism industries, this is not, this is Guam, right? We operate all year round, we're 24-hour operation, 12 months a year, generally good weather. We're not Colorado or someplace in Europe that operates half of the year or only during summer. We operate all year round. So we have to keep our staffing high, we have to keep our employees full-time, and we have a lot of people who have a long history of service on Guam. And we have generations of families who have worked as housekeepers, or food and beverage people, or just general employees in the industry. So 81% are full-time and they're eligible for coverage. Of that, those who avail of the coverage, it varies between 75% to 90% who actually take the benefits. Okay? So the concern is then, what about the part-timers? What about the casual employees? That makes up 18.5%. That's only 1,140 employees who are considered part-time and casual. If your uninsured population is 39,000 people, why are you attacking 1,140 people who you may or may not know have insurance somewhere else, or may be employed somewhere else where they have insurance, or maybe their spouse has military benefits? Or maybe their parents work for the government of Guam and they're still under those benefits? There are a lot of reasons why people go uninsured or don't elect benefits, because they have insurance elsewhere. Or yes, maybe they don't afford it, they can't afford it, but maybe they have three jobs and they are paying their bills at GMH. There are a lot of reasons of why or why not, but we don't know those, because we haven't addressed those. We haven't looked at the uninsured population or the outstanding receivables at GMH. So of the 18.5%, like I said, a lot of them do not elect coverage or even have coverage, because they're not eligible to have coverage. So who's to say, and again, I've had 12 years of health insurance experience, who's to say insurance companies are even going to cover part-time or casual employees? How do you prove that they're gainfully employed with these companies? They're not on the SWICA with RevTax, they're not reported that way on SWICA. How do you prove that they actually are employees who are on part-time and casual? So how do you verify employment? And how do you avoid adverse selection? The health insurance companies will not allow, nobody ever allows, nowhere in the world do you find part-time or casual employees getting insurance in a business. Maybe part-time, depending on the hours worked, but you will never find casual employees getting 100% coverage. Not even the government of Guam requires employees plus all their dependents covered at 100%. Nobody covers that, except the military, right? So we are not the military, we're private sector, and we do provide our fair share in the benefits coverage. But of those 1,140 employees, I think it's really a big assumption to make that they just aren't paying their bills at GMH. They aren't those customers who are the uninsured population. If they are the uninsured, okay, then let's have that discussion, but we don't know that. So if Guam does not have a heavily regulated insurance market, and I've shared this with Senator St. Nicholas, you know, we have an insurance commissioner through RevTax. We need to have these discussions. We have not have had a very active insurance commissioner in a while. And that's the challenge Senator Rodriguez will have when he brings up the discussion of universal healthcare. Our insurance commissioner, yes, it's art, but before, that person who has served for a long time is now retired. But nobody is really rounding everybody up to have this discussion, and that's really where it belongs. It does not belong on a referendum for the rest of the entire population, for the entire people of Guam to vote on. So where do you find an employer, anywhere in the world, like I said, who actually covers employees plus dependents? Who's going to cover that cost? If the intent is really because of the unpaid bills at the hospital, why are we going to put it on the backs of the employees all over again, or the employers who are already paying their taxes to help offset those bills? Bill 359-33 needs to be withdrawn as a proposed bill and should not be on the general ballot as a referendum. More discussion needs to take place with the legislature to include the insurance companies, the insurance commissioner, private sector partners, including ourselves, and the employers' council, SHRM, to find better solutions that can take existing programs that we have in place. And it was, I even talked to Senator St. Nicholas about, you know, tonight was Dr. Samabini's hearing. There's opportunities, even with Department of Labor, to look at ways of how to have public-private partnerships, to take those part-time and casual employees and help get them to full-time jobs and subsidize them. There's programs to help pay for their training so that they can get the skills to get full-time work. That's the kind of stuff we should be doing, not further taxing the employers. Notice, I noticed that there aren't other authors on this bill, and I take that as an indicator that there's no real support for this by our elected officials to take this further. And I really hope that's the case, because it does not, again, belong on the referendum. But the intent of the bill, and I feel for those issues about GMH, and I understand the concerns, because it is getting more complicated and way more expensive, but we need to address it in another matter, not put this out on a referendum and not target the hotels industry, or the hotel businesses, or the tourism industry anymore. In the Department of Labor report, just, I just wanted to check the numbers, out of 65,580 total employees, out of civilian workers, there were 53,430 full-time workers. That just happens to be also 81% full-time. The part-time employees are 12,150. That also happens to be 18.5%. So the part-timers is not a hotel industry-specific number. It's not a number because we happen to run lean operations. If we did, those hotels would be half-empty with employees. Do you know that our service level, our employee-to-room ratio here on Guam is two rooms to one employee? We compete in Southeast Asia. Southeast Asia is six employees to one room. That's the type of thing that we're up against when we compete in this destination, our tourist destination within Southeast Asia. That is what we're up against for the service levels. And yes, we should pay people and make sure we have more employees, but the more we deal with stuff like this, it's going to make it harder for us to staff and to schedule, to have a lot of full-time staff on this. So with the market at 18.5%, coincidentally, the hotels also have 18.5% for part-time employees. It's actually not coincidental, because the hotels are part of the private sector, and private sector really bends to the market's demands. That is just the way it works. That is the economies of scale that we deal with on a daily basis. Bill 359-33 states that the tourism industry's uninsured, and this is a direct quote, uninsured employee pool poses a significant risk and presents a danger to the healthcare system. That is a really big assumption, and I think it's inflammatory, but it's not a huge risk that our employees are exposing to our tourism or our community populations. The bigger risk is that the private sector cannot afford costs like this, because what will have are additional costs, and that'll further limit hiring and reduce part-time employment and casual employment. Of all the numbers that you quoted earlier, yes, everything is up. Costs are up, room rates are up, hotel occupancy tax are up, GRTs are up, but so are operations. The only thing that is down is fuel, but that's temporary. We've had, we've seen the rise of fuel here at the legislature, whenever we've had those hearings or at the PUC. We cannot only, we cannot attribute all of the savings, cost savings, to just fuel. There are other things. Water today at GWA, water actually costs more at the hotel than power sometimes, depending on your operations. And there are other things that go into the expenses, especially the labor costs. So the one thing that did go down in your numbers that you said, everything did go up. The one thing that went down was employment hours went from 39 hours to 36 hours. There was a rightsizing of operations and reduction in forces and reduction in staff overall, and there were more employees that went from full-time to part-time over the years, whether it's the recession or even the dollar minimum wage increase. That is what happens when you deal in a service industry. We will reduce staffing and limit hours. And the opposite, if you require all, what do you think is going to happen if you require all part-time and casual employees to have insurance? It's going to cost more to have the insurance than it would, than they would even make in their paychecks. So they're going to require more full-time staff to take on additional duties, or just move everybody to full-time staff and just really run a lean operations. You're going to see that really be removed. And then also, the other thing that I really thought was kind of inflammatory was the, and I really want to make this clear, the employees do not pose a risk to the healthcare system or to the population, the tourism or the local community population. We cannot make statements like that, because the tourism industry is very well-regulated for, and as well as the service industry or any other private sector that comes in contact with the community. We are so regulated, and we have even more regulations the last three years, from public health with health certificates, with OSHA and bloodborne pathogen and all these other things, we have now the responsible alcohol server, you know, sanitary permit, there's so many things in place to protect the community. We cannot just outwardly say that we are posing a risk if we do not have, if we have an uninsured population. We don't even have the data to support if they are the uninsured population. So I just need to make sure that we all understand that our employees, in order for them to be gainfully employed and working in the service industry, they have to have all of the proper certifications and certificates and the licenses to operate and work in that industry. So as the largest employer on Guam, next to the government of Guam, yes, we are constantly barraged with new legislation and regulations. Our employers are dealing with all kinds of new requirements, like I said, with public health, Guam EPA, Guam Fire Department even, Department of Revenue and Taxation, ABC Compliance Branch, but upcoming, we have the changes to the Fair Labor Standards Act, federal white-collar exemption rule, and local changes to the Guam Family Medical Leave Act. These are all things coming up, not to count any new things that might be addressed. To require this is really wrong, and to take this out to a referendum for vote is really wrong. We need to go back to the intent of this bill, which is the problem, which really is back to the problems at GMH. The opportunities are there, though, to work with agencies like Guam Department of Labor to address the issues of the part-time and the casual employees, those who are uninsured because they are gainfully employed, or maybe unemployed or displaced workers, or maybe they've been incarcerated and can't get employed, and we need to get them a job. That's all of, that responsibility is Dr. Samabini and her entire agency. We need to work together with that agency to find programs where we can take the unemployed and the dislocated workers. GHRA has been a sponsor, an employer sponsor of apprenticeship, and also a trainer for a lot of those programs for dislocated workers. We can work together to provide that necessary training, but the one thing that I've asked Senator St. Nicholas to look into, together with Samabini, is possibly subsidize or incentivize employer groups to take more people away from casual and part-time into a labor pool. And I've talked to, actually, Vice Speaker about this, is let's get them trained with the proper skills so that they can become full-time. There are programs under the Workforce Investment Act to pay, to help subsidize businesses so that they can get the training, but also pay for their wages and benefits for up to two years, so they can become full-time employees. There are programs that exist in place, we're just not coordinating them. So let's work on that, I'm committed to working on that, you guys be committed to working at GMH. I'm committed to getting more people working and full-time employment, but it has to come through other programs where these employers aren't constantly attacked, but also are incentivized and subsidized to help place them into the position and get them skilled, so that they can qualify and be eligible to get full-time employment and get a better wage. They also can increase their work hours through, on the job training, and private sector, there are a lot of private sector partners who are in the jobs to career or passport to career office, and there's a lot of ways to improve that unemployment rate, and they all relate to the uninsured market, yes, you're correct, but it is not the responsibility of hotels to solve all those problems. But it is not the responsibility of the hotels to solve all those problems. Although it's true, GBB continues to report record-breaking arrivals, trust me, I deal with this every day, I don't think that they really share the true story all the time. Honestly, they report record arrivals, yes. They record, they report hotel occupancy taxes up and GRT is up, but I can tell you the fact remains that the industry has been struggling. Although, we're at peak season now. The projections for other months aren't as pretty. We are challenged because we have peak seasons and we have non-peak seasons. We are not having the glory days like everybody wants to say. The numbers that you see are actually more from low-cost carriers than the other destinations where we used to also get higher-paying customers. The truth is, arrivals from Japan are down. There are variances between consumers and total spending, and there are increasing competitions, like I said, from Southeast Asia where our counterparts have lower cost of labor, some of them better goods and services, and they're just as close. We are obviously working together with GBB as tourism industry stakeholders to help diversify this market, and I think that GBB has done a great job with that, together with our hotels and airlines who promote Guam. It's been great that we've been able to diversify it because they anticipated Japan going down. So, this is really good that we are working together for that, but it doesn't mean everybody's making more money. Costs have been rising, and businesses have been adjusting to the rising cost of doing business on Guam. Guam is getting more expensive as a destination also, and businesses will continue to transfer the cost borne onto the consumer as long as prices continue to increase, and we will right-size operations and adjust productivity. We will find efficiencies that ultimately does affect the consumer and the service levels that you find on Guam. Each time you tax private sector, directly or indirectly, businesses will increase their cost of doing business and right-size operations. Today, GHRA strongly seeks your support from all of our elected officials to oppose Bill 359-33. The tourism industry and the employers, especially the hoteliers represented here today, pay their fair share in taxes and fees. It is the government's responsibility to manage the government fees and services and operations without further taxation. The Legislature of Guam should be creating laws to help grow our economy and not suppress or inhibit our growth by increasing our, the cost of doing business. We strongly appreciate your opposition to this, and we appreciate your continued leadership, and we look forward to working together with you, especially in this term and your next term, to find solutions to our very big problems here on Guam. So, thank you, Sutus Masim, Madam Stalimitol.
Okay. I'll ask the sponsor of the bill to lead off with the questions, and then I'll invite other senators.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, um, thank you, Mary, for testimony. I might have missed it and all that, but, um, so how many of your employees have health insurance of the 6,270?
Eighty-one percent are full-time employees.
That's not my question. How many of the, how many of your employees have health insurance?
Out of eighty-one percent, it, it, it's, it ranges between 75 to 90%.
Okay, so, if you have all that data, you must know how many of your employees have health insurance?
Right. So, if you take the average of 85% out of that, that's who has insurance.
Do you have a hard number on how many of your employees have health insurance?
I guess I would like to answer that question, but at the same time, it has nothing to do with the issue at hand.
That's actually the underlying point of the whole issue.
No, because there are reasons why people don't elect insurance at an employer group. It doesn't mean they're uninsured.
I'm sure there's reasons, and it's just a very simple question. How many of your employees have health insurance?
I have that data, but again, it has, I, I don't think that it's going to be a solid answer because they may have coverage elsewhere, so I don't want to say who has coverage and who doesn't, because they may have coverage elsewhere. So, it's not a true statement to say they don't have insurance.
That's, that's possible, but I'd just like an idea of how many of your employees have health insurance.
So, to answer that, I don't have that answer. I, I don't have that answer because it's not comprehensive. I don't have everybody, I don't have the answer of who else has insurance through their spouse. So, I can't completely answer that.
I'm not asking for you to extrapolate that, I'm just asking, of all of your employees, 6,270 of them, how many on your books have health insurance?
Sorry, I only brought the aggregate data with me, the percentage.
Right. Well, and, you know, I asked you for that last night, and I thought that you'd be also bringing that this, this evening. That's really the crux of the question. You know, and there may be variables as to why some have insurance coverage and some don't, but, uh, you know, here we have a very unique case where we have an opportunity in an industry that's generating hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue, 28 businesses generating hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue, employing 6,270 people as of 2015, an opportunity for us to very, in a very targeted fashion, ensure that that population has access to health insurance. How many of that population needs health insurance? We're not getting a solid number from you tonight, but, uh, you know, I would reckon that if we have such a large uninsured population, surely our largest employer has a role to play in how many of our people do not have health insurance.
Well, I already said the majority of the employees have health insurance. Eighty-one percent are full-time. Of that, 75 to 90% have insurance, so majority of them actually have insurance coverage. The remaining is unsure whether or not they have insurance coverage with their spouses or through other options.
All of that, all the, all that data, you cannot give me a hard number of exactly how many have health insurance.
Because they're not responsible for the, for the outstanding receivables at GMH. That's my point.
The, the whole point of the legislation is to ensure that our largest employer that's generating hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue is not creating an insurance or a healthcare liability as a result of not having enough insured employees. So, the number of employees that have insurance is critical, and, uh, you know, there's, there's different ways to present the data. You can say 80% are eligible, 75 to 90% are taking advantage of it, but really, there's just a, there's a hard number, how many have it and how many don't.
So, I would ask the reverse to you. We actually provide insurance. How many employers don't have insurance? That's the larger number you need to consider. How many people are unemployed and uninsured? Our unemployed rate is 6.9%. That's a much larger number than what we're talking about. So, I think that you're very, you're being too, you know, tunnel vision with this in trying to target one industry when you really should be looking at a larger population.
I, I disagree, and the reason why is because, you know, with this particular industry, if the costs go up, and by the way, they have been going up, even your average room rate was $111 in 2010, it's $159 in 2015, but as those costs go up, they don't necessarily translate into higher cost of living expenses for the people of Guam. A higher room rate doesn't translate into more expensive diapers, but when we talk about raising GRTs in order to make up for the healthcare shortfalls in our community, that does impact the, the people of Guam. And so, for us to be specifically targeting this industry allows us to target 28 businesses, 6,270 employees, in a manner that is not going to directly impact the cost of living of the people of Guam. So, it's, uh, it's very, it's very surgical, actually, and that's why the numbers are so important. The numbers of how many of the employees actually have health insurance is a very critical number. Another critical number for us to talk about is the, um, the wages of this employee base, because if 80% of them are full-time, that means 80% of 6,270 are making an average hourly wage of $9.35, and, uh, that's high enough to price them out of public assistance and Medicaid, but it's not high enough to be able to afford your own medical bills.
But how do you know that when you haven't even looked at where the problems lie and what these people have?
Because Medicaid, to qualify for Medicaid, you have to be below the poverty level of income, and so...
And have you looked at that, and have you attributed that to the hotels?
$9.35 comes out to over $18,000 in annual income per employee.
But you don't know if it's related to hotels.
No, $9.35 is the hour, average hourly employee rate in the hotels.
But some of them have multiple jobs.
That's right. And so, they're, they're further pricing themselves out of the, um, out of public assistance. So, they fall into that gap between making too much to qualify for Medicaid, but without the hard numbers, also not having the health insurance coverage of the employer, and that puts them into that very unique category of self-pay patients, otherwise known as the uninsured.
You don't know that.
I just explained it to you.
No, but you don't know that for sure.
I could, I could re-explain it to you if you didn't, if you didn't quite catch the...
No, you don't know if those individuals are actually uninsured and responsible for those bills.
You're not telling me how many employees are insured or not.
At least I have numbers of who's insured. You don't even know who they are. You don't even know who's...
How many are insured?
I think you're, you're getting away again from the point that you need to work with GMH if you're really wanting to identify the problems of who makes up the, one, number one, the uninsured market, and number two, the outstanding receivables, because the AR, the receivables, if you look up the makeup of the receivable, receivables, it's not just the uninsured market. It's also the insured population who can't pay their bills. It's also, um, government programs that can't pay back GMH, which is the government of Guam, by the way. That's the bigger problem, and you're really avoiding that by only attacking us, and it's really unfortunate because the tourism industry and the hotels specifically, they do a lot for Guam, makes up Guam's 60% of the gross domestic product. I say, we do more than anybody else to help provide fees to the government and taxes, not just taxes of revenue, GRT, hotel occupancy tax, also, uh, income tax. All of those things are things that the government of Guam should be using to help manage the budget and to pay those programs. So, we already give you the money, in a sense, plus more, to do your jobs. So, it's not really our job, again, to offer more than we already have, especially in a market that's not regulated. You are targeting an industry unnecessarily, and you're trying to do something that's not even mandated across the board. That's really not fair.
We actually have mandates for specific industries all over the island. You know, we have alcohol taxes for alcohol companies.
But it's across the board, you're not targeting one particular business.
Every tobacco business pays the tobacco taxes, just like every hotel will have to offer health insurance, and every alcohol company pays the alcohol taxes, just as every hotel will have to offer the health insurance. We do have industry-specific mandates relative to not only taxation but regulation. Every construction business has to have a, a worker wearing a hard hat on a construction site. So, we do have regulations specific to industries, and if this is going to be a regulation specific to this industry, there's really, I mean, you can talk about fairness all you want, but it actually happens in so many industries.
I understand, but it's across the board and it's specific to that industry.
This is across the board to all hotels, yes.
But it's not, health insurance is not specific to only hotels, and you're not supporting your data. So, like I said, whenever the senators put together a bill, you guys should really have supporting data whenever you present something and make sure that that data is true and accurate. What you're presenting are all subjective things, and they're all actually individual pieces of information that you're just trying to tie together. And I, and I just want to make sure we don't go off the rails here because it needs to go back to the fact that we provide insurance. There are thing, there are ways we can identify the uninsured population and the outstanding receivables. The employer groups, especially the hotels, already provide that avenue for the employees. To mandate it further outside of the private sector, that is, you need to look at the core, the source of the problem, because I can tell you now, even though you mandate all this, you're not going to fix the problem at GMH. You're just creating more problems for everybody else, and you're going to create, um, really a divide with the hotels where they're going to have to pick and choose within staffing, and you don't know what's going to happen with part-time and casual. To mandate that, like I said, you're going to have problems with the insurance companies and how to administer that. It's the same thing with the FMLA. Guam Department of Labor does not even know how to administer the Guam FMLA law. That is going to have to rely, go back to the employer to administer. So, there's a lot of things that the legislature does, and you guys need to understand the operations of it, whether or not you've owned a business or operated a business, this is something that goes direct back into the operational costs of doing business, and you're increasing the cost of doing business by increasing benefits, wages, or anything like that. It's going to hurt directly to the bottom line. And so, what's going to happen is you're going to continue to see increasing costs and reduction in forces over time and lowered services. So, I implore all of you to really look at the heart of the matter, and the heart of the matter is not whether or not a hotel has insurance or not. We already answered that question, they do. The heart of the matter is the uninsured market, fixing that, finding ways...
The heart of the matter is how many of your employees have health insurance.
No, it isn't. You said the issue is GMH.
And you're just refusing to provide that number, you know, which only further underscores to me that there might be a, a rather large number, you know, and, uh, I, I, I think that, um, at this juncture, I think the, the public, especially because this is a bill that's going to put the vote before the public, the public deserves to know that, you know?
Okay, so here's a number for you. If the uninsured population is 39, 39,000 people, we have 6,000 people. Of that, I already told you, 19% represent part-time casual. Those are more likely, the people who don't have insurance with the hotel but might have, that's only 1,140. Do you know what percentage that is of 39,000 people of the uninsured? 3%. So, you're trying to target a population that is only 3% out of the entire uninsured population?
So, how, how many of your employees do not have health insurance? What's the, what's the actual...
I don't have that answer. I only have answers for you based on who's part-time and casual, and that's 1,140, and out of 39,000 people, that's 3%. You're not even looking at the main problem.
See, I'm, I'm just getting lost of all the numbers. I'm just, I'm just trying to find out how many of your employees have health insurance or not, and, um...
You're not, and, you're not hearing me.
And you keep throwing all these different numbers at me, but it's a very simple number.
But the problem is the uninsured and the people who don't pay the bills at GMH, right? So, the bigger problem, we, if our part-time and casual is only 3% of that 39,000 people, 39,000 of the uninsured population, there's a much bigger part of the pie you have to look at, and you're really going after the ones who are actually offering benefits. So, I would encourage all of you to redirect your efforts and look at the larger piece of the pie, because if you keep going after the same industry, it doesn't work. You need to go after the, the 39,000 uninsured population and understand why they remain uninsured. We need to look at ways to fund it, subsidize it, or come up with additional funds to pay for it. Otherwise, that problem will never go away, whether or not you require insurance to the private sector. You need to address, let's say you pass a bill for universal, like what, you know, we talked about, where all employers have to have an insurance. If there's still a high unemployment rate and there's 39,000 uninsured, you still haven't addressed the problem at GMH, and that's what I'm trying to get you to understand. You keep asking me for a, for a number. It doesn't matter. Our number already is insured for the most part, majority. The small piece is a very, very small piece of the population that you're trying to address. You should focus on the full 39,000 uninsured population and the outstanding receivables at GMH. That's it. That is the heart of your legislation. That is what I encourage all of you to work hard at.
The heart of my, my legislation is to ensure that our largest private sector employer that's enjoying hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue and $139 million in net operating revenue, when you less out employee expenses, has all of its employees covered with health insurance. That's what the, that's what the bill does.
I have a question for you then.
And it's part of, it's part of the overall process to begin tackling the uninsured, but surely you start with your biggest employers and especially those that are bringing in the lion's share of the revenue, and that's what this bill is intending to do. And that's why the questions that I'm asking are so important, even though you insist on not providing a solid answer to them. But, uh, I mean, I don't think we're going to get anywhere, and that's one of the reasons why this is a referendum, because if the, if the politicians can't get the answers and it goes to referendum, then the people will be the ones to make the determination based on the information provided to them. And part of the referendum process is an education campaign by the proponents and the opponents of the legislation. So, I think that it just further underscores the need for us to put this before the people so that we can get the hard answers, and if the, if the data shows that, um, it's actually a bad idea for this industry to be held to this standard, our people will make that decision.
So, I have a question. If the largest employer is actually government of Guam, why aren't you mandating that the government of Guam have 100% coverage of employees and... government of Guam have a hundred percent coverage of employees and dependents?
I think that it would be a great, a great comparison if we had the same levels of full-time employment and the same levels of...
But it's, in principle, it's the same question.
Of, of living wages with, with respect to how much you guys pay your people. So we, we really can get into those kind of comparisons, but I'm not trying to go there. I'm just trying to ask the question of whether or not this is something that we should put before our people to decide. And I think that tonight's conversation just further underscores it, so thank you very much. Mr. Chairman.
I, I think for me, I have a, a different take on this whole issue, and I, I'm already seeing the benefits of having a public hearing. There was a bill that was introduced, and the, those who believe are being targeted by this bill have an opportunity, and you have to come in tonight to say that you are providing health insurance. For me, the way I read this bill, if the question is to be put before the people that hotels and similar lodging facilities provide a qualified health benefits plan for all of their employees and their dependents, this, this doesn't mandate it. It says that hotels have to provide this. Now, if the requirement, additional requirement is that they're going to be mandated to provide health insurance, then unfortunately, the unintended consequence is that the employees are going to have to bear the higher cost of health insurance for those who may be part-time or a student or a dependent of someone, they would have to be, or are, they are being covered by their parents, or they're being covered by their spouse. This initiative will just say that they have to be provided. I don't know if it goes further than what's already being provided by the hotel industry.
Well, you have to understand the way insurance works. Just because you are adding in your, let's say, your insurance of children, other children, insurance is paid for single, two-party family. Once you have a family rate, it can include more than three. And insurance companies would be really against that. Because if it's so liberal, like what has happened with the Guam FMLA, where it's so liberal, it covers so many people...
No, Mary, you missed my point. I'm saying they're already covered because they're covered by somebody else.
Yes, but I'm, I'm talking about how the insurance companies would view that. If you include that for all part-time and casual, that's a lot of adverse selection that goes into it.
Yeah, I'm saying that, I'm not trying to include anybody. I'm just saying that if they're a part-time employee at a hotel and on your books they don't have health insurance, it's possible that they're being covered by some other means.
Yes. Oh, I thought you were saying that this is a good thing to, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. No, I thought you were talking about that, once you do this, you cover all the other dependents.
The only thing good about what we're doing so far is we're having a discussion, a very public meeting about an initiative that Senator Sinques is trying to propose, and that he had mentioned, he had said some things in his legislative findings which you found to be, in your words, inflammatory. So tonight, you had an opportunity to, to go through all of those comments or all of those statements that's contained in this bill, and you had an opportunity to refute it. So I'm just talking about the benefit of having a public hearing, so that we can...
I guess it's unnecessary for us because we already understand that and we provide it, you know, to all of the employees who are eligible. The insurance companies, working for an insurance company before...
No, Mary, the, wait, stop. The public hearing is necessary because we're talking about this, but that's, that's the extent of my comments. I've never indicated my support or non-support for the bill.
I know, but what I'm trying to say is that...
You're saying that the bill is not necessary.
It's not necessary because to, we already understand that. We already provide the insurance. This bill really should have been more about GMH and the outstanding receivables. I would really prefer that it removes us.
So what I'm trying to say is if the bill's trying to put the question before the people that hotels have to provide qualified health benefits plan for its employees and dependents, that's already being done. That's what we're testifying tonight.
Correct. That's why I'm saying it's unnecessary. And why would it be up to the people of Guam to require a business to offer that? That's why I'm asking the question. If the largest employer is really not us, the largest employer is government of Guam, why wouldn't that same question be asked of the government of Guam to offer a hundred percent to all dependents?
But providing a qualified health benefits plan is not the same thing as mandating it. So if you're ready...
We don't have a qualified health benefits plan, and you're going down the road of Affordable Care Act. And so that's why it's also premature. You're trying to incorporate something that doesn't exist, and it's not fair to require one industry to do something that's not mandated across the board on Guam. We don't even have a defined qualified health plan. That's something that the Insurance Commissioner has to go through with all of the insurance companies to define what the benefits are. With the Affordable Care Act, you're missing steps in this.
What kind of health insurance are you offering then if you don't believe that that's a qualified health benefits plan?
Okay. So all of the plans that are offered are from our four carriers. Some of them have off-island insurance through, for their executive plans. For the most part, majority of the employees have Take Care, Stay Well, Net Care, and Select Care. But my point in that is they all have health insurance plans, and they are all approved by the Insurance Commissioner. But to use the words qualified health plan, we don't have that on Guam. That is taking terms from the Affordable Care Act. And in order to have a qualified health plan, you have to propose that to the Insurance Commissioner as a qualified, it's like the basic benefits. It's like what GovGuam does during their negotiations to negotiate on behalf of the pool of all of the employees for GovGuam. You have a basic plan, right, with a high deductible, and then people have to pay extra for that plan. But at the end of the day, those are benefits negotiated for all of Gu, Guam. That's approved and identified as a qualified plan because it's pre-negotiated with all the carriers. The hotels don't do that, nobody else does that in private sector. Everybody has direct negotiations with the carrier, and the Insurance Commissioner approves all carriers' plans. But Affordable Care Act is the one that actually, you have to go through a proposal process with the federal government to submit qualified health plans. We're using terms that don't exist on Guam, and that's why I'm saying it's premature. Because there's no qualified health plan for private sector companies right now. Everybody is just an approved insurance plan through the Insurance Commissioner. We're trying to mix in stuff from Affordable Care Act into this, but without having the substantiated, substantiated, like, it's nothing with substance in here that's been approved or even reviewed by the Insurance Commissioner to be called a qualified health plan.
But by whatever means, but by whatever means you call it, you're still providing health insurance.
Yes.
So that if someone gets injured, God forbid, and they need the resources of GMH or a private...
Yeah, for sure.
...care provider, they have coverage.
Any plan to be sold on Guam has to be approved by the Insurance Commissioner. And those are the plans that are afforded to the employees through contract negotiations with each individual hotel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I, I would like to direct everyone's attention to page seven, and I'll read it because it, it's there. For the purposes of this article, qualifying health benefits plan means one or more health benefits plan offered by an employer with the following features. A, all health benefits plans offered by the employer shall require the payment of not more than fifty percent of premiums by the employee, provided that at least one of the health benefits plans offered by the employer must have no premium cost to the employee for individual coverage. That section A basically means that the implementation of this plan will have no added out-of-pocket cost to the employee if that one minimum option is provided. Letter B, all health benefits plans offered by the employer must meet the requirements for an essential health benefits package required in and by the Secretary of Health and Human Services under section thirteen oh two A of the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act. Such essential health benefits package shall meet the criteria under the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act and any amendments thereto for deductibles and out-of-pocket limits. So there's the substance of the bill. We're basically saying that you must provide a qualified health benefits plan. It must have the minimum requirements as stipulated in the Affordable Care Act, which is federal. And one of the plan options must have an option that does not increase the out-of-pocket expenses to the employee. So it would be a high deductible plan that conforms with the Affordable Care Act and that does not require out-of-pocket employee costs. So that's, thank you, Tom. That's all here in the bill. That's part of the referendum portion of the bill. The first part, the first five pages of the bill basically stipulates the referendum process, but that is the referendum language, and it's there. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty clear what the, what the bill would do. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I understand that. And the health insurance companies all, like I said, submit to the Insurance Commissioner and comply with the laws of Guam and also follow the federal benefits, I'm sure. But to do all of this and still require all of the other, I think that we're being, there, there's other steps that need to take place before this happens. And that's why I think the discussion needs to take place with two separate issues. One is the GMH, outstanding receivables. And then the second thing is the issue of the health insurance benefits. And that is something that is a much larger issue, and it's not a hotel-only specific issue if you're wanting to address that. And that is something that Senator Rodriguez has been going down that road with several stakeholders and some of your fellow colleagues to talk about this universal health, healthcare, where you have to submit to the, go through a process to create qualified health plans. So this is not really something, it's kind of half, it's not even half-baked. It's just too preliminary to put on a referendum, for one, especially when there are efforts already being made to have this discussion. None of the sister organizations are in support of this universal health plan right now. We are only, have been talking to them. We understand how the insurance companies have been working with Senator Rodriguez, but we haven't seen any draft legislation or descriptions on this. It's all been talk, and I know that the Society of Human Resource Management has been doing a survey to find out what things should go into this, should we go down this road. So that's all I'm saying is it's really too premature to go down this road, especially only for hotels, when efforts are being made to look at this from a community perspective to be fair across the board, but also to understand how the insurance companies are going to work with this. And there are a lot of unknowns. So to even demand or require that, like, for example, with the part-time and casuals, those are very problematic because there's no way to prove that through SWICA or whatever, and you're really going to get adverse selection with people who just come in and get a plan, and then they have multiple coverage, and then you don't have coordination of benefits. We live on a small island, and if you have two or three plans operating together, I mean, that could create a huge mess. And we already have a hu, a huge problem on our hands. We don't create, want to create another one. And that's why I think we're taking our time with even addressing the Affordable Care Act issues because it is a very complex matter. There are a lot of things that go into underwriting of these types of plans, a lot of things that go into provider negotiations and contracts with these types of plans. And so this is not a simple matter we can just throw out to the public to decide. That's really actually irresponsible when we don't have something in place for the public to even review. And honestly, this is not something for the public to review. The people of Guam, the revenues of the people of Guam come from the taxes, from the employers, from the employees, through income taxes and all of that. We pay into that. So when we talk about the people of Guam and the revenues created by that, who do you think brings those revenues to the government of Guam? We do. And so when you say the people of Guam who you represent, you also represent us and all of its employees. And so that's what we have to be clear on, and we have to be very careful going down this road. It is not a simple fix. But the good news is, we are providing insurance to our employees. That's the bottom line. You really want an answer on that? We are providing insurance to our employees. Some of them elect not to have coverage. They have coverage elsewhere, or possibly they have multiple jobs. That is not really the argument here today. The main point of the problem, again, is back to GMH, the outstanding receivables, and whether or not we should go down this road of Affordable Care Act. But a lot of work has to be made further into it so we can understand it and better support the initiative if we are going to have this as an initiative. We need to do our research, and we need to have the discussion with all the stakeholders, including GMH, including the insurance companies, including an Insurance Commissioner who's going to approve all of this. It is not up to the public to decide that, especially for the hotels and its employees.
Okay. Any other senator wishing to ask questions or comment? Okay. The other critical component to this initiative is the election itself and the timelines. And so we'll get with the Guam Election Commission. This is why this bill was referred to me, because it is an election issue...
Right.
More so than it actually is an initiative to provide for health insurance to hotel workers and so...
Right. Yeah, from my understanding, it's due at the end of this month in order to make the ballot?
I'm not sure if Election Commission has ever taken that position with respect to how many days they need to prepare for initiatives, whether it's via legislative submission or, because they still have to have the education component, and both sides have to have equal opportunity to present their arguments regarding the bill, so... Okay? No other... Well, no, thank you so much for your participation. I, you know, I, I know sometimes asking people to come after working hours to provide testimony on any matter before the legislature, it's, it's a critical element to guiding us as we try to move forward on some of these issues. Okay?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity tonight.
And those who still wish to present testimony in the bill, they're welcome to do so, and I will continue to accept those testimonies.
Okay, thank you.
For, for ten days. And for me, the general rule has been customary, ten days, or if the legislature goes into session, whichever comes first.
Okay.
Okay, so, but we'll let you know whatever those plans are if we're, are going to go into session.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, so this hearing is adjourned, and thank you for your participation.
Thank you very much for your curiosity.
Yes.